To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Croatia's hands. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Evening, everybody. Uh, welcome to our December meeting. Good, uh, roll call.
Councilman Brick here.
Councilman Stone.
Here.
Uh, good as well. Councilman Bozak. Please. Councilman Stitt.
Present.
Present.
So we have formed by the skin of our teeth. If we do, okay, thank you. Uh, minutes. Approval of minutes? Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second for approval of the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, first reading.
The following appropriation adjustments have been for county budgets have been brought tonight for your consideration. General fund salaries one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, thirty-four cents, hourly five thousand, FICA two hundred and forty-nine dollars, thirty-nine cents, per three and six, five dollars, twelve cents. Pota croche is eighty thousand dollars, contractual forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, data processing equipment twenty-five dollars. LE- LEV, bond training, education, twelve thousand, tax sale fees, contractual twenty-five thousand, expo center, seventy-five thousand, expo capital, inter transfer, twenty-five thousand. Public data tech, uniform, clothing, sixty-five, equipment rentals. EMA processing fund, other supplies. RDC fund, inter fund transfer, six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, thirteen. Dictions, refunds, contractuals, twenty-six thousand, EPA C fund, lease payments, forty thousand, adult community corrections, inter fund transfer, twenty-three thousand. Ninety-six dollars, seventy cents. Passaguardian ship funds, sold, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. CDG grant fund, auto truck, fifteen dollars, motor vehicles, seventy-five thousand, first reading.
Okay, thank for that. Uh, first on the agenda, special presentation in reference to, uh, uh, bond. Hello, how you doing?
Hey.
Good evening. I'm gonna take her over to you gentlemen, me. Uh, we're just gonna vote on it.
Sure, this is the, uh, um, last step of the process that we started several months ago. Um, tonight, uh, first on the agenda is a public hearing on the appropriation of the proceeds of the proposed bonds. And then following conclusion of that here, um, you have an ordinance before you that authorized the bonds and appropriates the proceeds for final consideration. Um, it was introduced at your October meeting.
Okay, just to clarify, is this a public comment as well as the public hearing or?
It's a, it's a public hearing, we can certainly open up for public comment at the end on the appropriation. I was talking to Jimmy about that, but I, uh, from my understanding, and Jimmy, you're, you're in a better position to answer this than me. Uh, we just need to vote on the final appropriation ordinance. And then, you know, any, prior to that, have any, uh, discussion on the, the, the bond itself and the appropriation.
Yeah, it's, uh, good, the public has the opportunity to ask questions about the expenditure of the bond proceeds on the projects and any question that council may have also, but, um, since the, um, expenditure on the project is inbuilt into your regular budget, you have to go through an additional appropriation process to authorize the use of the proceeds, um, in addition to your current, uh, already approved appropriations.
Do we need to, does someone need to move for that particular appropriation?
Yeah, that's correct, you would just open the hearing and then invite any comment, any questions, and then you can close it when appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Alright, so at this time, what I'm gonna do is with the strike of the gavel, open up for public comment in reference to the bond, so. Uh, public comment, uh, opportunity is now open, if you'd like to step forward and comment on the bond. Once. Twice. Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. And we will, uh, we entertain a vote now, or?
Uh huh, okay.
So, uh, moving forward with, uh, with the quorum, uh, final adoption of the bond, uh, to move forward, uh, I believe we do need a.
I make a.
I, I think we need a motion for the appropriation.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, this will be a roll call.
Sims?
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Brick here?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Emotion carries.
And then, Mr. President, I think we need a motion on the ordinance itself, i- if you believe that's the case, Jimmy.
But, yeah, was that on the hearing or the?
That, that was on the appropriation, I believe.
Yeah, the, there's one ordinance that both authorizes the bonds and also appropriates the proceeds, so. If you took action on that ordinance, that'd be sufficient.
I, I, and I don't think we explicitly voted on the ordinance, so I think it would be best to have a.
Sure.
A se- a specific vote on the ordinance itself. So if someone would offer a motion to approve the ordinance as included in the, uh, materials today, uh, we can vote on that, or the council.
Can I offer a motion, my friend? We have a motion in reference to the ordinance, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so is roll call vote?
Yes.
Uh, roll call, please.
Green.
Yes.
Brick?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Four zero.
Motion carries. Good, good, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, and then the plan is to, um, sell the bonds this week with your approval, um, that you just gave us, so we'll have money by the end of the year for your projects.
That's one, appreciate it.
Great, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, she's got it, I guess.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have, uh, the commissioner. Uh, France, twenty-five thousand, uh, postage, water insurance, water, group, give the year.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for commissioner, E Court four.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have, uh.
Hello.
Transfer, fifteen hundred dollars, uh, transfer needed to pay for, course pay hourly through the end of the, I think the motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Superior Court. Superior Court? Superior Court one?
Mr. President, it is a, uh, judge pro tem at a city right now in Superior Court one, so it, it may just be, uh, uh, communication, uh, issue in terms of having to be here specifically, but.
Well, this looks like a, um.
There isn't a.
Do they have to be here?
No, no, I bet there is an additional, but it's up to the, the council, if the, if the council wants to pro tem here, but I don't, I don't believe we need to have.
This, uh, course here.
Looks like a two hundred dollar transfer needed to re.
I make a motion, I make a motion, two hundred dollar transfer.
I'll second that, two hundred dollars.
Second for the transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, that, uh, that carries, and now we have an additional.
I just have a question.
Grant fund.
That's right.
I have, uh.
Question for consultants?
Yeah, on that.
Does anybody, Ryan or Dave, do you have any?
I should be able to answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, what's your question?
The, uh, how long has this, uh, been in, uh, is this something new?
No, the device of guardianship grant has started in twenty-twenty. The first year, we didn't quite utilize it as much, twenty-twenty-one, start to take off. And then twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, all been steady on, uh.
On the amount, twenty-two?
Uh.
It's been that much every?
Day bill is. Yeah, they put a support release on this, mass quarter.
Any other questions in reference to the additional, we can take through the additional, uh, council will have to move forward with this. Okay, we have an additional, um, guardianship grant fund appropriation to pay outstanding invoices.
Uh, I'll make a motion, okay?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, please.
Brick?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Four zero.
Okay, carries, um, treasurer? Jimmy? We have, uh, an additional, um, tax sale fees fund. Reason tax sales, made of fees we paid to vendor for redeemed, sold tax sale properties.
That's correct.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
These are fees we collect, uh, at the, related to tax sales properties, we just don't have the authority to pay it, and, uh, you guys give that authority each time.
Yep.
Any questions?
Yeah, not, not this many.
No questions? Uh, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the additional, a roll call, please.
Stone?
Yes.
Sims?
Yep.
Graham?
Yes.
Brick?
Yes.
Four zero.
Facilities. Income pad. We have one, two, three transfers. We do these individually?
You can do this together.
Together, we can do this together. Um, we have all of these transfers, you can see, let me see, um, first one needs to make through here, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, paid for since the hourly, or from hourly to overtime. Uh, the next one is, uh, thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, twenty-six cents, from hourly to building maintenance. Nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, sixty-three cents from uniforms and clothing, the building maintenance transfer, need to purchase equipment.
I'll make a motion, pay for all the transfers.
All three?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second for all three transfers, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Decorations look good.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice, nice.
And I wish, I wish, uh, Councilwoman Graham the best, uh, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
Jake? Parks, we have, uh, yeah. We have three transfers from the Parks General Fund, and then we have one transfer from the Parks Operating Fund. Uh, again, we can do all.
I make a motion, we approve all three at this time.
All second?
Second.
All three or?
Should be, um, well, all three from the general fund, then I'll make another motion from the operating fund.
Yes. We have a motion for the first three out of the general fund and a second.
Correct.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign.
Now, I'm motion to, uh, the Parks Operating Fund for two thousand dollars for advertising.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, uh, final transfer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries, thanks Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
Veterans. Veterans, we have, um, transfers, transfers need to cover payroll for the rest of the year. They're coming out of the general fund. Without salaries, it looks like it's all going to hour, right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, any discussion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, we have an additional four thousand and four cents to salary appropriation, to cover payroll for the rest of the year. Any questions on this additional?
Now, that was the one that we had, that we talked about a couple of months ago, right there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve the four thousand.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the additional, roll call, please.
Sims?
Yes.
Green?
Yeah.
Brick?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For County Expo Center. Uh, first, we have transfers, uh, transfers, FICA and perf, end of the year.
I don't know. Pretty boring.
Yeah, forty-five hundred from gas, uh, FICA, two thousand from power, thousand from power. Any questions on the transfers?
I have any question, President, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the transfers, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We have, uh, additional seventy-five thousand dollars from other equipment, additional appropriation need to purchase a new truck for plowing. And, um, and ground, as soon as that's, this one is.
Yes, yes, that's moving equipment and stuff like that, this is actually getting paid for via the grant that we got.
Okay. Any questions for, on the new vehicle?
Uh, how about I can motion, Mr. President?
Second.
We have motion and a second, additional, roll call, please.
Green.
Yes.
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
One more, we have one more, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve five thousand for the inter transfer fund.
Second.
We approved the first, we gotta approve the second, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. For the next additional, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brick?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thanks.
Survey. Kevin, you, period. We have, uh, transfers, transfers need to get through the end of the year for software?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion approved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Carries, thank you.
We also had a, a transfer for, uh, FICA.
We did both, we did fourteen hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you, and happy holidays. Happy holidays.
EMA. EMA, we have, uh, additional twelve thousand, uh, reason LEPC training exercise, that is. This is, uh, out of the LEPC fund.
Any questions for Lance?
No, in the LEPC fund, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the, uh, additional, uh, the training exercise expenses, roll call, please.
Stone?
Yes.
Sims?
This is for the twelve thousand.
Twelve, yeah, twelve thousand.
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Brick?
Yes.
Four zero.
Okay, we have the, uh, out of the EMA General Fund, additional twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to salaries for the hazmat commander, physician salary.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
It should be appropriated to that, three thousand two hundred.
So appropriate.
He doesn't really need the twenty-five, he just needs three thousand two hundred and sixty, cause he's, there's only one page.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
So this will be to get some air with that, so.
However, by us okaying this, we're okaying this sound.
Correct.
I, I was hiring.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Hire anybody for that?
No, there's, um, we've had a lot of applicants, only two really are, um, qualified. Um, and one said they would take the job, but not for the salary, that, that is, and that's, and this is in reference to the, um, email and letters I sent to the council, email on September twenty-fifth and October eleventh. Um, the hazmat commander's job currently pays less than a frontline firefighter with no rank for the cities of Alpham Portage, which goes between seventy-two and seventy-six thousand dollars. No one is willing to take this with the experience needed in order to be the commander of this hazmat team, so we have not had a hazmat commander since August twenty-fourth, when Commander Eckhart passed away, there's no backup for that position. Um, the commander of LaPorte's team has been helping us out since then, but he's getting very tired, and, you know, I just had a conversation with him, I think, you know, there's talk that, starting at least at the latest, January first, they're gonna start charging for responses, and, and I can tell you from having to build those in the past with my days at US Steel, I mean, I've charged upwards fifty-six and seventy-eight thousand dollars for one, one response, depending on the amount of equipment and time that's involved. Um, so what I did was, I called, I, I talked to the state fire marshal's office, and, and this is detailed in, uh, October. Um, but I got a list of all the hazmat commanders in that part of the state, and I called every single one of them, and I got their salaries. Um, Porter County's is the sp- second, almost third, just with some change, lowest paid in the northern part of the state. Um, what I did was, I averaged those salaries together, and that's what, where I came up with what I think we should be paying this position, um, eight, which is eighty-four thousand and some change. This is a heavy industry, um, and it's probably one of the heaviest industries in the state, uh, in our area, maybe save Lake County, um, they probably have more. We've had Commander Hamilton has responded to twelve, now it will today makes thirteen, um, hazmat incidents since September first. So, you know, there's a large number of responses, we had in, oh, Port County, almost on the Porter County line, a few months ago, there was a train derailment, and by miracle, true miracle, there was a single pin that wasn't designed to hold that train up, held it from falling off the, the tra- or from rolling off the tracks with about forty cars of highly hazardous chemicals, we would have had another East Palestine train derailment if that had rolled over. Um, but knowing that, you know, if that were to happen in Porter County, we have no commander. And so it's important that we fill this position for the public safety, um, so that we have someone, one to respond. Um, and then we have to look at down the road, putting a backup in position, um, it, you know, a backup commander employee, so that if the commander's sick on vacation, or something happens like Commander Eckhart where he passes away, we have a backup for that position, because the team is all down the tier, they're not paid, so you don't have somebody who can just step up. So we're putting the citizen, and then the firefighters that are on the scenes in jeopardy, because we don't have people that are able to run that team. Um, and so it's very important, if, if LaPorte is on a call, we may get nobody. Um, so we, we're really have been very lucky, and I don't want to see our luck run out. I know I've talked to the fire chiefs, this was discussed at the, uh, Fire Chiefs Association meeting last month, and it was discussed at last, the, uh, the last EMAC meeting, um, as well as previous meetings, and people are very concerned, so. My goal is to just shore this up so that we can have people responding safely. Um, we're fortunate that, excuse me, none of these have been an enormous magnitude, but there's always that possibility with all the trains, uh, and hazmat on, on both trains and trucks, and, you know, we have a port, all the things that could go wrong. Um, and it just takes one incident to have a lot of people get hurt really bad or killed.
How does it affect your number two, uh, at the chain of command, their salary?
Oh, the deputies, yeah, this would put the hazmat commander higher than the deputy's salary, so that is an issue.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Your salary then?
I'm sorry.
Is that gonna be increased as well?
Well, I would like to see that, what, what I was trying to do was get somebody hired, and I talked to my deputy director, and he said, look, if we can even just get somebody to get us through the end of the year, and then we move to, uh, you know, his salary after the first of the year. He said, I realize the importance of the safety matter, and, you know, he's thinking of Porter County, not himself. Um, and yes, after the first of the year, that would be my goal, was to get that in line, um, so that, you know, we have the right, uh, parity as far as position wise. But at least right now, if we can get somebody hired and in, then they're at least trying to shore this team up, but then again, we have to look at adjusting that deputy director's salary, as well as getting a backup for this commander, so that we can have a viable team and have redundancy in our system, which is really what EMA is all about, is having redundant systems.
Is there any other, um, uh, like, Portage Velcro, is there any other qualified hazmat commanders, or anybody in Porter County that works for any other agencies that
there.
Could be a second, get a stipend or something?
Yeah, we could look at that, that's not a bad idea, I mean, we, there is somebody in Porter County that's willing to take, to take the, uh, frontline position, but again, uh, they said, I'm, I'm not taking a pay cut, and, you know, I, I can't do it for that amount, but I think that is something we could look at, you know, that definitely.
How many, I mean, how many hazmat commanders are out, I mean, does every, would like Portage have one, Velcro have one, or no?
No, it's just the county has one, so the individual municipalities, at least in our county, do not. Um, and I don't know of anybody in the northern part of the state that does, I'm not saying there isn't one, but, um, I know there's some counties that do have two teams, probably because of the size of the county, but.
What are your deputy make now?
Um, he's at, I don't have the figure of mine, but I think it's sixty, what is it?
Sixty-seven.
Okay, I knew it was sixty-something, thank you, Rick.
So you're looking at bumping that sixty-seven thousand up?
Yep.
Not right now.
But.
No, eventually, yeah, eventually.
First, the next year.
Yes, sir.
Up over, where do you looking at, cause if you're hazmat, it would be your number three, you're making eighty-four seven.
Yeah.
Like a twenty-five thousand dollar raise.
It is.
You're gonna be looking at another twenty-five thousand for your number two for.
Correct. Yep.
Plus another position, a fifty-five thousand for a watch commander?
If we do that, um, that's what, uh.
One thing I would.
Councilman Stone was saying.
That we can do, get, give a stipend to or something.
I think we can look at that, and I can, you know what I mean, suggest that. I don't know that that's out of the question, it's a good idea, you, you know, maybe we can work something out with one of the municipalities to do that. The big thing I want, though, is that, a- and this would be the only problem, if somebody has their regular job, um, and say something happens to our commander, are they going to leave their job in their retirement, that they say they have seventeen years on with, uh, fire service, which is a different, um, retirement fund? Uh, are they gonna leave that to come work for us and, and lose all that? They're probably not, so now, how do you get a commander, now you do have a backup, you know, possibly, um, when they're not at the regular job, that can maybe fill until you get a commander, but it, it, I'm not saying it's a completely bad situation, but it, it's not without flaws, but.
You know, I'm, I know that, uh, it's needed. I'm a little concerned about the amount of money and the conflict that you're setting up with the department with, and this is the end of the year. Um, I know it's needed, but I'm very concerned about, uh, causing more conflict in that in your department. Um, I would like to make a motion to table this too, uh, for a month for this, for the new council to. Um, I would like to make a motion to table this to, uh, for a month for this, for the new council to, uh, take this on. I'd be willing to, to make it at a lower rate, but I'm a twenty-five thousand dollar raise. I don't know if that's more than what you're making.
It's, it's not, but, I mean, respectfully, you can do that, but you're not gonna have a hazmat commander. And now if we have a catastrophe.
About the end of the rest of the month.
I'm sorry?
Until the, uh, new council can.
Well, I know, but we're still rolling the dice respectfully. I mean, we can do that, but we're rolling the dice that something is not gonna happen, or we're not gonna have a lot of people hurt.
Is your hazmat commander a more specialized position than your deputy?
I- i- in the realm of hazmat, it is.
So why, why was your deputy gonna be making more than hazmat? Or if that's a more specialized and a more, uh, specific job description, I know he's a number two, but in the scheme of things.
I, I mean, that would be like saying the SWAT commander should make more than the chief deputy of the sheriff's department. They outrank them, and there's parity with ranks and responsibility, because when I'm not there, the deputy director is the director.
I'm not.
So.
Or was committing to a fifty thousand dollar increase in your salaries. At this point, uh, not to say that's not needed, but, uh, um, I'm okay with pro-rating this to the end of the year, but look, we have the, the.
I guess, yeah, well, if you, if you.
We vote on.
You hire some.
You could, you would have the one forty-four that you have to vote on, yeah, tonight, and so, I, I don't wanna take a position one way or the other in terms of the, cause that's not my role, but you, you, if you're gonna vote on the pro-rata.
We'd be committed then to.
Well, we're in, in a seventy cents.
Seventy-two, seventy.
Then we'd have to look at the deputy salary, that would be a separate, you bring that back.
Well, a- and we wouldn't be obligated or committed to do anything with regard to the deputy here.
Right.
Tonight, but, but.
That's gonna be a.
But it's an issue.
I'll, 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 I'll second, um, Sylvia's motion to table it.
Thank you.
Cause I, there's no, that's, I think we need to regroup on this and, and talk it over, new council come January, and, and, and we talk about it then.
Might wanna go back and look at those job descriptions, who, who comes after you? I mean, if hazmat, you can't get somebody hired for hazmat at this salary, you know, you know, get that, but then look at that F B job description and see if that person deserved a five thousand dollar. Um, just because the hazmat guy, physician can't make more, that's not a reason for me to. Um, the hazmat position deserves more.
But to be fair, though, we're not ask, we're not, we wouldn't be voting on that right.
No, we're not, I'm not asking.
We're not messing with that.
That's gonna be coming.
That's, I would, I would be comfortable in looking at seventy-two, seventy-five, but to, to go with what you're asking, I need more proof of.
So the gentleman that's gonna be coming would be coming for eight, for, for this salary?
For which salary?
Eighty-four.
Yeah.
For eighty-four.
And I don't understand what, what your question, you need more proof of what?
I would like to have more validation of who you looked into, to what you, what your, what you, uh, you said you, you went around to like three or four counties or?
Oh, I called every county's hazmat commander in the northern part, but.
Would like to see.
Well, Councilman Graham or Council Graham, I sent you that letter in October, and it has the whole list of them. I sent it to the entire council.
Did, did you really look at it?
Lance, did you speak to any council people about this?
I've, I've talked to several, well, I talked to several.
About this?
Those, all of this, so for seven, and I'm gonna back up, and I'll come back, I will come back. Seven years, I've been talking about this backup position, and I've gotten denied or asked to pull it every year. When Commander Eckhart got sick, I talked to President Brechner and several, uh, other council people about this, that we needed to get somebody in here to get them trained or start training in this position. When Commander Eckhart passed away, I had this conversation with several people again. Um, and it.
Wasn't me though.
Well, I, President Brechner is one of my liaisons, which I'm supposed to go to. I was gonna talk to you about it, the EMAC meeting you weren't able to attend, so I wasn't able to talk to you about it. Um, but I've talked to several council people, um, about this, so this isn't anything new. And, you know, respectfully, I'm not asking for anything for myself. I'm concerned about the safety of the citizens of Porter County. If people can shake their heads, it may not be what you wanna hear, but I'm telling you what you need to hear, and I've been doing this for thirty-nine years. I've, I've been in command of highly trained groups. Um, my last position before coming here, I was a master chief of half of North America for US Steel, in charge of six chiefs, twelve facilities, and six hundred personnel. I'm not telling you this because I read a book about it, I'm telling you this because I've done this, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful. But I am trying to watch out for the citizens of Porter County. I'm getting nothing out of asking for this, other than me trying to shore this up. But this is not something that has not been talked about, and I've been talking about this subject in addition to the backup position for seven years. And so I'm sorry if this is, you know, creating a problem, but I didn't create it, I'm just trying to fix it.
Well, but Lance, didn't you, uh, solve one of the problems by hiring their, when your secretary left or whatever her position was, and you hired the, the boy, the, or, well, I'm old, but the young man, and then he picked up the slack to fix your, uh, start your motors and all that stuff, so that solved a lot of problems.
When we, when we reverted to that, when I couldn't get the extra position, and it's, and I'm on tape saying this, I said, this will help the problem, but it will not solve it. So it will move us closer to where we need to be, but it will not solve the problem. And I'm willing to do it in order to get us closer, but I told this council that, that this is not gonna solve this problem, but I'm willing to do it in order to try to get us moved closer.
Say, speak, I'm gonna speak for the rest of the council, understand that the hazmat position is a specialized position. Eckhart did it, um, all those, for that. And you're struggling to find somebody to do it now. Uh, now I'll come with the hazmat salary, because that is a very, again, specialized job. I think what I would add you is to look at your chain of command structure and group it, look at that number two position, um, as your deputy, you know, to, to separate you and the deputy from the hazmat, or why the hazmat individual is number three on the pecking order.
Right.
But I would have concern when you, I, you know, I, I would be finding, you know, understanding that this position's a, uh, eighty-five thousand dollar a year job. I mean, I feel comfortable with that, but just kinda plant the seed, I'm not comfortable with bumping your number two guy up by twenty-four grand.
Right.
Just to put him above that.
Right.
Threshold, um, I mean, I'm just kinda throwing this out here for the group where I'm coming from.
Like I said, I don't have a problem from, yeah, from getting the hazmat commander, it's just that.
That's all I'm asking for.
Backup, and then, you know, that, I get, that's stuff we need to talk about, but if, if we're not gonna get the votes here tonight, we, we need to regroup and.
The. I mean, I, I understand, and I have had conversations with, uh, Director Bellon, and I know it's been a challenge, um, for all these years Eckhart did it for that salary, and now, you know, with his passing, trying to find a replacement to do this job, um, the market, you know, uh, has increased. Um, you know, I don't think Eckhart ever asked for anything more than what he was making. But now to compete, you know, so I, I, I buy into that. Um, you know, and I don't, I'm not getting ahead of ourselves here, but just anticipating coming back to.
Right.
You know, that's where I would have a problem, but that's, that's still down the road. I know you need some help trying to get.
Sure.
Yeah, well.
The group, I think this is a competitive wage from what I've seen and know that they're having a lot.
Yeah.
I know he's been struggling with it for a while.
But he, here's my question, do you have a job description for what you expect our hazmat to do and the other job descriptions of what the others are getting more money for? Cause I know talking to Eckhart before, there'd be times where he didn't do much because there was nothing to do. And I know we always had to have someone just in case, and I get that. But do these other areas, when their hazmat director is not addressing an issue, are there other duties they're doing, or is that just all they're doing?
Well, ours had other duties, they do environmental background checks, they answer complaints by citizens, um, they pre-plan. Um, so just like a fire department, you know, commander, they're out pre-planning a- and looking at tanks and constantly answering questions. So he didn't just respond to, and it's a good question, um, calls for service as far as, uh, emergencies, but a lot of other things, um, when somebody was building a new, uh, facility or remodeling, he did the environmental background checks, has there ever been a spill there, or their chemical store there? And he would have to write a report, and in fact, there's records of that, because I think they got a twenty-five dollar administrative fee that they were allowed to charge, um, through the auditor's office in order to do that. So there, there were fees, you know, that were being charged for that, which were small, but, um, but he did a lot of that. And we get a lot of, like citizens will call, my neighbors dumping, and they have to go look. Um, I, there's a strange shoe in the water, and they run on a lot of things like that as well, so.
Okay, well, that would just, that would help me if I knew we're carrying apples to apples.
No, I agree, and, and there's a lot of training, Greg, that, so they have, you know, a volunteer team. So they have to come in at nighttime, and, you know, they have meetings, they train just like we do it with our EMA responders. So there's training for that. Also, um, being able to help fire departments. Um, so, you know, meeting with their responders, maybe they go to Washington Township's trainings night, and they teach some of them about hazmat, because the goal is to make sure, one, they don't get themselves hurt or killed, but then also are there things they can do to minimize the scene until the hazmat team gets there, because there's a delay. I mean, you might have forty minutes, forty-five minutes, sometimes an hour before you can assemble the whole team there. So it's critical a lot of times what those firefighters or first responders do in the minutes leading up to the time when the team gets there, they can minimize a lot of damage and problems, or maybe evacuating and getting people out of the way so that they don't get hurt. So training them too is really important, and I, and I think, um, and Greg, in fact, he got an award from the state fire marshal's office stating that, that he had done a lot of training for firefighters and responders all around. Um, I know he also did some training for some of the industry people, trying to make sure that they were trained as well. So I think there's things like that, and I think we can even expand on that, um, training our own employees in the government, you know, poor kind of government, on things that they can watch for, and, you know, to, cause our goal is hopefully to not have things happen. So I think the more people you can train in that too, it's, there's prevention, but then always the responding to, you know, that's gonna happen eventually. But if we can minimize that, that always helps too.
One of the things that I can add tonight, and I apologize for the council and to our audience, why I'm late. My truck caught fire in front of my house, okay? And the fire department from Oregon Township was there, and to your point, uh, I asked if the phone that they were using was safe, and I said, well, Mr. Eckhart, when he was alive, he didn't have to, but he always came out for something like this to make sure that, uh, things were on the up and up, and he was always with us and doing different things. So he wasn't just waiting for something big to happen. I, I do know from talking to the, uh, assistant chief tonight, that there was a lot of things that he did besides that, and that was unfortunately, to my knowledge tonight, firsthand, so, yes, I'm very aware of that, sir.
Thank you.
I forgot, did we have a motion for you?
We did have a motion, same, but then we talked about.
And.
Well, the motion.
Well, and the concern I had about the, I'm sorry, no, no, that was, I interrupted you, Jeff.
No, go ahead, interrupt me.
No, no, I, well, I just, the motion, I wanted to make sure that it was clear about the pro-rata versus the total salary, because there was a change in the agenda, and I wanted to make sure if, if we did vote on it at Lance, that we had the correct number for the pro-rata, you know, for not only the, uh, the pro-rata, but also, uh, the pro-rata salary, but also the FICA and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about that. We, we had one, but I think we needed, I don't think we can vote on that particular motion. I think we need to, if we decide to go that route, get some clarification as to specifically what that pro-rata amount is, cause I think the motion was on the, the full amount, from my recollection, am I right, Joy, or?
Motion to table.
The motion was to table.
Oh, well.
To review the salaries.
On those other two, I guess, that are based off the three thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty, uh, dollar amount.
Right here.
Oh, they are, okay. So i- if, if there is a motion, a- and the motion is intended to bump the, the salary as requested, it would be an additional for three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for salaries for the hazmat commander, two forty-nine, thirty-nine for FICA, three sixty-five, twelve for PERF.
That would be if we approved the eighty-four thousand.
Correct, yes, I, and I, I, yeah.
So does a motion have to be amended?
It, it's, I, I think we need, I, I, I forgot Sylvia's motion to table.
With respect.
And I second it, but I, I, I couldn't withdraw my second, so.
You, you withdrew your second?
I withdraw my.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Okay.
Okay, so.
The second.
I, I did.
The table.
The table.
Yeah. And we have a second to table this.
Correct.
All right, so.
For.
Is, uh, we'll call on that? This is the table one. Sims?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Rick? No. Steph?
No.
Fast one?
No.
Okay, that motion does not carry. Uh, did you, or another motion?
So I would make a motion to raise the salary from fifty-nine, four ninety-four to eighty-four, seven, seventy.
Is this for the coming year of twenty twenty-five?
No, you can't vote on twenty twenty-five.
Oh, we, we can only vote going up to the end.
So then we would be voting on to increase it to thirty-two sixty?
Thirty-two sixty, if we do that.
Okay.
That would go into the, for, for the, for the next year.
We would, we would have to also vote on the form one, form one, one, or for the remainder of the year, yeah.
So we have a motion to, uh.
And I understand, I'm sorry, like I.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
There goes that Rob, Robert Truill, the hoarder.
Yeah.
Book you gave. Um, and, and I did read your October, I, I did read your emails, and I, 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 you know, when we talked on the phone, I, I know you were struggling to, to find somebody, so this gentleman, you have a gentleman?
Yeah, I have a gentleman that said if you could get this, I would come, and he would take the job. I actually think he'd be fantastic, but, um, he wasn't gonna come for the salary we had.
Okay, and so I, clear, that salary tonight, this is the same salary that you proposed in your email to me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cause I knew.
In the, in the October.
I believe it was in October, so.
Yes, sir.
Pretty big increase, I.
Yep.
I say what's going on, we can't find anybody.
Right.
Hazmat commander replaced Greg, you know, he's kinda stayed the same salary, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that this salary.
That was the same.
That I read in the email.
Yes.
Deal, okay.
I.
Have a motion.
Right.
To do the pro-rating.
Thirty-two sixty.
As, as well as the FICA and the.
As well as FICA.
As well as the FICA. And PERF, correct. And we're, we're not doing the form one, three-four yet, we don't, do that next.
Okay, so what happens, uh, Harold, if we, i- if this passes, but the eighty-four thousand does not pass in January?
Well, then, then it would, we would revert back, I mean, that's, it would, it would, revert back.
Okay. Take money away from.
Yeah, that's.
That's, yeah, practically that, and that, which would very, you know.
That'd be weird, yeah.
Uh, but, but that's what.
Cause I'd like to see, I, I would like to see the job description personally. I, I, giving somebody eighty-four thousand without exactly knowing what the responsibilities are seems preposterous to me, so.
Is it in here, Lance?
It is.
The full job description? I see one for the watch commander.
I do too.
An assistant, but I don't see one for a hazmat.
And my heart, my heartburn was just the watch commander, like, that's, this one, this one, while, while, while the raises.
You're right.
Yeah, watch commander's the very first one.
Lance, just hand me one, Ben. Can I see what we need?
Sure.
All right.
Mike?
Yeah, maybe.
Right there, watch commander, right here.
It's in your package?
In the packet. So this is.
So this is, so somebody can get this job with just a high school diploma?
No, you have to be hazmat tech minimum. So there's a lot of things that go into getting tech, um, prerequisites, but minimum hazardous, hazardous materials technician. And it's probably wound up what you're looking for in the language of all the state requirements, which that's what that is.
Hey Lance, can I ask a question?
Yep.
What I'm looking at, and I think what the council has, is a job description. EMA watch commander slash assistant hazmat commander.
No, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about hazmat commander's position.
So this is not the job description?
No, not if that's what you have in your hand, no.
That's what I.
Yeah, this, the watch commander.
You guys want a copy of this?
Yeah. I'm getting this now, I think it.
Yeah.
It's not smart for us to vote on this.
We have a motion.
I mean, that's the job description that the council approved when they did the job studies, so.
Is that different from what I have here on the, on this paper? I'm sorry, what he has in the sense of different from this?
Yes, it is, I think this is the.
Like I said, I, I know that you're a county, and uh, with this, this position. I'm not concerned too much, but this is not a legitimate range. Not to re, repeat myself, just kind of. I think this position would be hard to fill, then, for something where you're a number two.
It's a dying breed, it's hard to even find people who are willing to do it. I mean, it's a hard job. You have to have a lot of technical knowledge, and it's a nasty job, I mean, it really is. You're putting yourself in jeopardy, and a lot of people in jeopardy, so it's getting to a point where it's hard. I've talked to counties where they're, they're having a hard time finding qualified people.
You said there's not a lot in Porter County right now?
No. As far as being to that level, yeah, there are some. He's from Porter County, I'm not gonna say, because I wanna put him in jeopardy with his job.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to have a hazmat.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, is it sixty, or is it seventy-two, or sixty, or is it? Or, I've. You've been working on this for months, I know we've talked about this.
Yep.
You know, I, I get it, it, it's a big increase, but if we are going to have to have a person. Might as well have a, a good qualified person, take your recommendation.
I mean, everybody saw after the East Palestine train derailment, all the questions and things that came up and investigations there. You don't want somebody not qualified for this job if something like that were to happen, you know? A lot.
Yeah. Lance, can I?
Matter of fact, Greg Eckert actually worked with our school resource officers about what trains come through Chester, and what. If there's a emergency, because there's some pretty bad stuff.
It's a lot, you know, it's more than people realize.
People realize is coming through them trains.
Yep.
Lance, can I ask you this question?
Sure.
Let's say, just for the sake of discussion, before motion goes even further, is that. Let's say that this thirty-two six, uh, thirty-two sixty gets approved, and come the beginning of the year, uh, Greg's point. Uh, we don't get eighty-four, but we get somewhere in that ballpark of that, will the gentleman still be interested, or?
I don't know, I can't speak for him on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that, that does run, that does run the risk that come the beginning of the year, if we're close, but not there.
Yes.
Be back in the same uh predicament we are in now.
Yeah, and that, and that, and it's a good question, and that's why I, I brought this up when Commander Eckert passed away. But it was after the time we'd already turned our budgets in, but that's why I brought it up, because there was still time to vote for next year. And it, we weren't allowed to even present it, so.
When was the last time Commander Eckert had an increase?
Uh, when they did the job study.
Which was, yeah, but, went a while.
So, I think, well, you guys approved a three percent raise, so he got, you know, that the last time, but.
I don't think anyone's disputing that he was underpaid.
Oh, okay.
He did a great job for a little month, there's no doubt about that, but my next question is, you know, I mean, we're giving this person a car, right, a vehicle?
Yeah.
Gas, so, you know, eighty-four thousand plus a vehicle, and no gas insurance, that's a, that's a nice little incentive right there.
Well.
That's all it is?
Yeah.
So we shouldn't see it at Walmart or anything like that?
No, the only time they're allowed to, to use their vehicle off duty is if they're stopping to get a gallon of milk on the way home. Um, but it says in the rulebook that we don't drive it more, and I don't do it, so.
You won't see it at the movie theaters, or shouldn't, well.
Unless you're on your way home from work.
So right now, we, okay, any other discussion? We have a motion, and I don't, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to. Pro-rated thirty-two sixty. Correct?
Including the.
Including the.
FICA. FICA and perf.
Correct.
We have a motion for that, uh, we've had discussion, um, roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
Okay, um. That motion carries. And now we have a, a motion on the form one forty-four.
I don't think, was there a motion on the one forty-four, I don't know if there.
We haven't done.
No, we haven't.
I don't think so.
No motion yet.
Oh, my god.
So, uh, we're down to that, which is, um. Basically the same thing, just uh, one forty-four. Motion and a second, if we want to proceed.
Make a motion on the one forty-four.
Second, you have to have one, to have the other.
We have a motion and a second for one, form one forty-four, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Four county sheriff. We have a transfer sixteen thousand calories.
I make a motion for sixteen thousand.
We have a motion. Is, uh, how's your, is your time doing better with the twelve-hour shifts for patrol?
Well, right now, because we have so many training, uh, that's hard to answer. Um, we're projecting, once everybody is done trained out of the academy, yeah, it's gonna make a big difference. I think, uh, you know, with your experience from twelve-hour shifts at Valvo, you know that it's, it's gonna make a difference. Right now, we've just had, we've had people in training.
We actually, I just got done doing payroll over time, is, right now, even though we have so many people in training. They have been keeping really good track of it. I was moving this money so we didn't run into any problems. Remember, this was turned in if we didn't remember, so.
We have a motion and a second, um. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Um, we have other transfer from the drug task.
I make a motion, second.
In a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We have the, uh, did note forty thousand appropriation needed for the remaining balance of license plate readers. Uh, this is coming from the full-friture, so it's fun.
Mister, I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, the additional. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Uh, yeah.
Carries, uh, jail general fund, I make a motion, we put the seven thousand seventy-seven.
Second.
Motion is second for the transfer. Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Uh, county correction fund, transfer ten thousand. Need the remainder of the year for medical and dental.
I make a motion, Mr. President, approve the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we have additional from the public safety data on sixty-five thousand. Lot special weapon attacks. So they're expiring. Questions?
Yeah, how, how does, just, how does a vest expire?
Well, the company will only guarantee the material, it keeps it, the ballistic uh, materials. Although, they will only cover it for so long, and clearly, if they put a warranty on it. Uh, our SWAT members that are putting their lives on, in jeopardy under high-risk situations. I don't want them to be wearing expired uh, material that, where a bullet can pen- penetrate it.
Okay, that, that was my question, the exact, is, does the material underneath there?
It breaks down from sweat, wear and tear from being used. Um, that's not uncommon for uh ballistic uh vests to uh have an expiration date. That's on every vest uh that an officer will wear.
So it's different from the military, like, when I was overseas, the Kevlar that we wore, which didn't really stop any, anyway, but.
Well, it's advanced over the years.
Just a curious question, what do you uh do with the expired vests?
There's not a lot we can do with them.
Burn them?
Yeah, they're, 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 they're gotten rid of.
That material.
We don't sell them.
That material can't be reclaimed somehow, and you.
No, no, no.
The inside, nothing that's reusable?
No. Yeah, maybe like carriers sometimes, but I don't know if uh we even place that.
Right, the plates fit different?
Yeah.
I, I'm not saying that we go in.
Yeah.
Rejuvenating them or anything, but just, I just was curious for.
Yeah.
Unrecycling.
No, we usually, we usually, uh, I, do we, Tim, do you know what you're doing?
One year we sent them to uh, piecework. They're still hard and brittle.
And then they're also fitted for size, so you, you really reissue them.
Okay. We have a motion on the additional. Second.
You don't, uh, second.
Second, again.
We have a motion, the second, uh, on the additional, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, we have another additional, uh, one thousand dollars appropriation to cover the cost of oxygen. For inmates, inmates need oxygen?
There are some that are on my.
Close the carbon.
Uh, bottled oxygen.
I make a motion, we put the thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, um, roll call, please.
Rick.
Yes.
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 Uh, next, we have inmate processing keep on additional seventeen thousand appropriation to cover the cost of gas masks. For jails and patrol.
Make a motion, we put the seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Um, okay, next, extension response grant fund, this is additional twenty-six thousand. Appropriation needed, these are unspent funds. Services associated with it. Additions?
That should say addiction, sorry. I'm better at numbers.
Um, any questions? Mister President, make a motion, we put the twenty-six thousand.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to approve, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And, uh, last, community corrections. Trans, additional four thousand ninety-six dollars and seventy cents appropriation needed for DOC. Move back to fund nine-one-six-one.
Make a motion, we approve.
With the, uh, I'll second it with the, I'd like to ask, what is fund nine-one-six-one?
So this is, this was ordered by the audit that they did. And so at the end of last year, we moved the balance. Because this part has to alternate each year, going to nine-one-six, nine-one-two.
What are they, what is it?
It's the community corrections.
Yep.
Community corrections, what?
Grant for, it uh pays for our case workers for the jail. And our services to inmates for like our um, chemical dependency. And our God pods and all of that.
Jail programs.
Yes.
So, what, what we did know from the audit was, at the end of the year, we're not supposed to move the balance over. The balance is supposed to stay in the account, so that way, it goes back each year, you have that money there for you. We moved it back and forth, so that we have to move it back.
Just out of curiosity, who ordered the audit? You said it was an ordered audit?
Uh, they just, I mean, so when you turn in our books every quarter, that's their audit.
Okay.
It's the DOC audit.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how much money do they use, do you use out of it?
Um, this year, we were awarded two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and we're using all but twenty-five thousand. They, they deduct what they give us the following year from what was remaining the previous year. So next year, we got even more money, I believe we're at two ninety for twenty-five, and what we haven't spent.
So are this encumbering this?
Pardon me?
Are you encumbering this to carry it over, or?
No, it's.
You're moving it from one account to another.
Moving one to the other, yep.
Okay, my questions are answered.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion, the second, roll call, please.
Sim.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Yes.
So, yes.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, um, we have fat prisoner. General fund, this is an additional thirty-four thousand, one fifty appropriation to cover medical services for.
Mister President, I make a motion, we approve the thirty-four thousand.
Motion.
Second.
And a second.
I wasn't gonna second it.
Um, roll call, please, on this additional.
Yes.
Yes.
So. Yes.
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 We have a, um, additional, additional eighty thousand appropriation to cover food and groceries.
Peanut butter and jelly.
I'm gonna make a motion, but we talked about this today.
Yep.
Makes sense, when you budget, when you budget for this, you know, you might have, you might budget on three hundred and twenty-five prisons, it might pop up to three sixty for three, four, five months. Depending on how many prisons we have.
That is correct, we can lock in a price per meal.
And then price per meal, too, I know a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Got us, I believe it.
Yeah.
Went up a lot.
It went up, yep, there was an adjustment made, and uh, so we lock in a price per meal, um, but we, what you can't take into account is kosher meals. You know, which are.
Kosher meals?
Six, six dollars a meal. Per, per meal.
And by federal law, you have to, some.
And by fire's law, we have to, right?
They just ask.
O- o- okay, but is it a better meal? I mean, do they know enough to say, I want that, so I want kosher?
Tell each other.
Yeah.
They see it.
Well, it's a religious thing, and you.
No, I get it.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, yeah.
So we can't anticipate the number, because of the uh inmate number, the population goes up or, or reduces. Uh, all we can lock in is the price per meal.
How many kosher meals do they?
It really fluctuates, because like I said, if somebody sees someone eating it, as a general rule, they'll be like. Six a day, but then it'll pop up to twenty-five.
Now, by law, can you ask them if they religiously are required? I didn't think so, that, that, that bites. No, that's, that's, that's why you're having this fluctuation and this big amount, because I was gonna ask, you know, other eighty thousand. Seems like there's a concern here, but. She says, I was gonna ask you, you know, other eighty thousand, seems like there's a concern here, but if, you know. Twenty other guys see that they're getting the kosher meal, it's a lot nicer. Yeah, I'm Jewish, I need that kosher meal and you can't ask.
They don't even have to see it.
They don't have something, they just want a kosher meal.
That's them.
He's okay.
And that we can do, this is a crazy world we live in.
Yes, it is.
Okay, now that makes sense.
Yep.
Fortunately.
If you have a question, I did make a motion.
I did second for.
Second.
Was Andy?
Haven't got one in yet, second.
We have a motion in second, um roll call please.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
A kosher, yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Five two.
And um.
Crazy.
We have a transfer request.
I make a motion, we approve ten thousand twenty-six thousand dollars. For the transfers.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia, thank you very much for your service, it's been a pleasure being with you.
I'd like to echo that.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you and thank you for everything you've done.
But you know, the ditto is never against the initial.
I T.
Hey, we have the uh.
Thank you.
Nine thousand five eighty-five appropriation of the mission of the radio tower at North County. I T General.
Where's it, where's that lady?
Yeah, the tower's located in the back of the North County complex.
How big was tower, is it?
It was a hundred and fifty feet. But the what initiated this is we don't use that tower, we're friends, it sits there.
Yeah.
But it's tall enough, we have to have a light on top of the tower.
You have to.
Of which costs thirty-five hundred dollars and that was going out and uh when we looked at the equipment with it. The capacitors were going out, that's a thousand dollars and it's like we're throwing all this money to a tower that we don't even use.
I make a motion we uh for nine dollars five eighty-seven seventy-one for.
Second.
For instance, the demo of the tower.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Is that a second? Motion in second on the additional, roll call please.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Five two.
We have an additional twenty thousand appropriation to cover Adobe licensing. Email management monthly fees. Network security. Balance. Balance to go for day-to-day I T business.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
You have a question?
Yeah. Okay. The seventy-three uh sixty-six ninety-five Adobe, wasn't that already budgeted in for the year or is it something new for the quarter for? It was budgeted, it was planned, but costs have just gone up significantly, hence why I came before the you guys early this year. You d- you didn't have the money to give me, I get that, I rec- I commend my staff, we have cut and trimmed as best as we can. But fees have, you know, consultant fees and licensing fees have increased and uh there's a shortfall this year. When when do they nor- normally uh regenerate this bill? Uh is it uh beginning of the year, middle of the year? This is the first year we did the Adobe. Okay. And so it's it came due end of November. Every large bill over two thousand dollars that I give, I prorate the next time so that it shows up in February, so all the large bills are paid up ahead. Okay, thank you.
So I really need twelve thousand six forty-six ninety-five and then the rest is gonna be for the fee.
Yes.
Can I ask, why didn't you ask for twelve thousand six forty-six ninety-five, just curious?
As opposed to the twenty?
Yeah.
Because we still have.
Outstanding.
Outstanding reg- regular, yeah.
And and I know you do, trust me.
Oh, I I.
I support.
You ask any question?
Right, I I would I would just, but I.
Sure.
I think you're the only one I've.
But.
Throw it in.
No, no, a good example is.
So exact, so.
No, a a good example is uh usually at the end of the year, we get a good discount on new computers.
Right.
And so we've always tried to set aside so many computers for the next year while we can get that at a decent price and so that's what we'll do, is we'll buy again.
And so this next year coming up, you are you comfortable with your budget on time?
Oh, yeah, we're very thankful, I mean, a great step in the right direction.
In the right direction.
Yes, we appreciate it so much.
And you're getting going on doing inventories and.
Yeah.
What and.
Yeah.
Security and and all the all the good stuff.
All the good stuff, yeah.
Throughout the county.
Appreciate it so much.
Is there a motion, man?
Not yet.
I make a motion.
A motion.
Second.
In a second on the additional, uh roll call please.
That's right.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Five two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Sylvia, hate being the third person, but yeah, thank you for your service.
Quite welcome, it's been my honor.
You could invite her to your Christmas party, you know.
There's a lot of people that wanna come.
Uh huh.
I don't think for some reason, I don't think it was a yes.
We have uh transfers. Uh transfers needed for final invoice invoice for Baker Tilt.
I make a motion we approve the transfer.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Um we have the additional development commission R D C fund.
I make a motion for six thousand three eighty-five thirteen for the transfer fund for the R D C fund.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion second for uh additional. Any discussion?
Uh uh let's see, this South Haven Tiff?
This is, we have one Tiff district in in Porter County and South Haven Tiff.
Right, it's for that.
The gas station.
Right.
The quick stop, not quick stop, but whatever the gas.
Yeah, the one on the corner, yeah.
The first time we collected money.
We actually collected money, yep.
We didn't have fund created at the time, so this is moving to have separate.
I did make a motion.
I see.
And Sylvia second.
I think Sylvia second.
Um roll call please.
Sims.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Five two.
Here we have, we're still with the auditor and an additional, this is seventy-five thousand.
I make a motion we uh approve the seventy-five thousand for motor vehicles, this is the E V energy grant, this is a hundred percent paid for with the charger, the car and.
Yep.
All that.
This is just all reimbursement from the actual grant.
All the actual grant.
Well, this is the reimbursement?
Which the Maki for.
Yeah.
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 Charging station, yes.
Yeah.
So this is the reimbursement, you said, oh, okay.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Yeah, let's see. Uh roll call please.
Grant.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Um next we.
I make a motion for the fifteen thousand.
We have a motion. Motion in second, uh roll call.
I have a que- I have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I I know it's a small amount, but. Oh, never mind, okay, I can read the end, sorry, go ahead.
Good.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
If the last time council won the grant.
Wow, yes.
Okay, thank you. Working on that.
Um.
Huh? No, we.
Following adjustments.
Don't we have the opioid one?
We're gonna do that.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Following adjustments to the twenty-two budgets have been brought before you for consideration. Salary, thirty-seven thousand seventy-nine dollars per hourly five thousand, bikehead two hundred and forty-nine dollars thirteen cents per three hundred and sixty-five thousand twelve. Food and grocery fees eighty thousand contractual forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven and seventy-one cents. Data processing equipment twenty thousand, L E P E C grant twenty training education twelve thousand, tax item fees contractual twenty-five thousand. Export, third wind and seventy-five thousand, export building for seventy-five thousand. Fifty data tech uniforms and clothing single five thousand, equipment metals one thousand. It may provide other supplies seventeen thousand, R D C fund for fund transfers. Three hundred and eighty-five dollars thirteen cents addiction response contractual twenty-six thousand. D E A seizure fund lease payments forty thousand, adult community correction their fund transfer twenty-four thousand ninety-six dollars seventy cents. Vasa, vasa, guardianship grant consultants twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ten. E B C V G grant fund auto truck and equipment fifteen dollars, motor vehicle seventy. Second.
Could you pass that?
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the second meeting, uh roll call please.
Rick.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Okay. Joy or the. Okay, um. Yeah, other matters have uh.
Don't.
Sims, opioid committee.
Yeah, here's on the screen is the finalized application. It is up on the website now, so people in uh actually they've already been printing it out and um. We'll start taking them on January first or second, we won't be on the first, right? Theoretically, but this is this is what it is, a lot of hours were put into this, a lot of discussion put into this. Now, we do know that at some point it could get tweaked if we see something that needs some adjustments, but um we all we all thought it's pretty good. Um, yeah. Well, uh uh thank you for putting this together, I I did see it looks really good, thank you. No problem. Good, it's a good good start for that. We hope so, yeah. Well, it's, yeah, I mean, as we got a lot of money to give out and let's get some people that have some cool ideas and, you know, the to help our community, you know, and this is all about Porter County, so.
Agreed.
Yeah. There it is for you guys.
Well, Greg, we are.
Well, it's more of an F Y I, right?
Yes.
Is I, yeah, I was, I had thought about that before uh beforehand and I know Joy had raised. And with the commissioners taking the lead on adopting the resolution and forming the committee, I w- we don't need to uh.
Approve.
Approve, but yeah, I mean, if we were gonna form our own committee, then yes.
Yes.
But I I don't, and the commissioners have taken into consideration uh obviously the council's role because they've uh included two council members to be on the committee, so.
Right.
No, long answer to a short question is.
But basically, it's it's just to let you know that there was real thought process put there before we start handing money willy-nilly and and it was like uh Greg said, a lot of time, a lot of time, this is a lot of thought, a lot of discussion.
We will need to approve the funding.
You're right.
There for a reason, so that's.
And then we we appropriate each individual award as well.
Right.
So, yeah, so we're we still the. They gotta come in front of us last, yeah.
Looks good. Very good, uh. Good.
Yeah.
Well, I want to um uh take this minute, Sylvia, we've had some people come back and say you and thank you for your service, I know that. You know, this is for us most in a way, cause uh I think um to speak for, first of all, it's an honor to serve, it's a privilege to serve and it's like. Team first?
Yes.
You have your your name under the hat, you know, like you're a man, man, woman in the arena, so somebody has actually experienced that. Um and uh done it for themselves, you know, realize how much work it is and at times it can be uh it's rewarding, it can be stressful. All in the same thing, but feel for a lot of years you uh you have served Porter County well as a councilperson. Uh we do have it, it doesn't seem like much, but uh this is from uh all of us, uh. Could be here, Joy as well and everybody, but this is a plaque of uh gratitude, something that um. Uh hopefully uh will be some good memories and reminders because you served well for many years.
Well, thank you very much.
I would stand up by any shorter. And present this with you and appreciation of your outstanding service as a person of Porter County and will be on the taxpayers as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Only one that got the memo about wearing purple.
Uh truck on fire.
I I. I just wanna say, it's as you said. Any of us can say it is an honor and a privilege to serve, it really is. And I've done this, um my whole life has been giving and serving people. Um, much has been accomplished in Porter County. Um I've been able to serve on many, uh almost all um. County all boards and that, I was on the um plan commission the first year I was in. Um but we've accomplished so much in Porter County. If you can remember when Mike Jesse left, he he had two pages, I believe. That he read off, I'm not even going to be reading this, but I have felt that I have been uh made a difference. And um. I've been on the recycling and waste board, the detention advisory board, Porter County Agent and Community Service Board for sixteen years. Um been lia- liaison for to multiple county departments. Uh by my asking, Porter County Health Department for monetary aid to Porter County Agent Community Services and the Juvenile Delinquent Services were granted funding. Um and hopefully that will continue. Uh my goal from day one was to be a voice for the people. And to listen to concerns. Um I've tried to answer all calls and I've worked diligently and I love you guys.
We love you too, Sylvia.
And right, it's been an honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. Pretty much. Appreciate it. Uh now's the time for uh to open up for public comment, um to uh close a meeting. And officially open the floor for anybody in the public that would like to speak.
No.
I think I just have questions, actually I got one. So for the K M I, we're gonna give our raise. Is it just the uh the three thousand that they're initially getting and then in January if they don't play, i- if they cannot get the amount, like eighty-five? I'm sorry, I'm gonna get my number.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four thousand? What happens? I'm I'm just curious, and then he did mention the fact they would need to hire a backup as well, so. I'm, I'm just curious, and then he did mention the back, they would need to hire a backup as well, so. I'm just trying to understand.
From what I understand, that we appropriated for the remainder of the year, and my question, if you remember to him, was. What if we're in the ballpark, not exactly, and he said he could not speak for the gentleman? We may find it that it's not within our means at that time to give eighty-four thousand, let's say we only come up with eighty. And if we lose that gentleman, we just may lose him, but eighty thousand is a substantial increase from our point of view, okay, from the county council.
Still gonna pay this person this whole money.
Yes.
Extra money.
Yes.
And you're kinda taking a gamble, kind of, if, if they come back and say, okay. This is what I'm expecting and then, you know, of course, you guys could say, well, we can't afford to pay that.
But I think they know that, they, they know that, what Lance is probably, if I'm, somebody correct, if I'm, uh, wrong, but. I'm pretty sure Lance is gonna explain what happened here tonight, and know that eighty-four thousand is not a set in stone, it's something that he's approached us with.
It's the honey, what I'm saying, that's pretty much what that other.
Well, when he said he couldn't speak to it, I think that gives us a little wiggle room, okay? If we can pair four thousand dollars off of that.
Yep.
And say eighty, we don't know at this time, you are correct in that, but we have to go with what we need to do to have somebody on board now.
What have we been doing since the, since passed away?
Unfortunately, not a whole lot. Am I?
Well, well, no, I mean, our, our county's been covered by other counties.
Other counties, but.
Our, our hazardous stuff has been taken care of, it's just, we just don't have an official person representing Porter County in that role.
That was some of the concerns that I had, it wasn't, we absolutely need this person, it's just the idea that it was, um.
A lot of money.
It wasn't, yeah, it was a lot of money involved, and it wasn't clear to me. How he was, how it was working with its other employees, if there was going to be a lot of conflict. Uh, in their department, or if it was just to come back next year and ask for raises for everybody to get everybody up to. You know, I don't know, but it was a little confusing, it's the end of the year, uh, like you said, our county is being covered. Uh, but I, I wish them will, it's just that I, I didn't feel like I could vote yes on that. For that reason, it was the money that was involved.
And I mean, I understand that it's important, but how many trained women's? Do we really see, again, I understand that, you know, it's a crossroad right there, but.
Well, well, Dawn, a lot of.
But you have to have it there.
Yeah.
If, you know.
But tankers, I, it, whenever there's an accident on a highway and diesel spills, that's hazmat, so. There's quite a few of that, cause unfortunately, there's accidents all, every day, so, you know.
And anytime they apply like.
Big, that hopefully, that'll never happen in Porter County, but.
Right.
And, and what I learned tonight was that anytime they apply that foam, yeah, they, they were using a different type of foam tonight at my house, cause I asked them, I said. Does that destroy me as an organic farmer? And I said, this is biodegradable foam, fifteen, and I said, okay. They said, well, normally, Mr. Eckard would be out here, and then they explained for, the assistant fire chief explained to me for the next twenty minutes to half hour. Exactly what he did above and beyond the scope of what EMA does, you know, just going out to derail trains. All the different things he was listening, I was just floored by it, and I said, he did all these things, I did not know that, so there's more than just sitting around waiting for a train to derail. And if that does happen, by God, you better believe you want somebody who's EMA trained and knows what to do. Because in the first five minutes, if it's, uh, uh, noxious gas in Chesterton, you're gonna lose a couple of thousand people. So it, it's money well spent, unfortunately, uh, that it has to be an amount higher than we can, that we paid in the past, but it's been, as. Said, Mr. Eckard did it for a long time, uh, why did he accept such a low pay? Well, I, I knew Mr. Eckard for many years, uh. And, uh, he had some military benefits and his heart was in doing things for the county, this is why he accepted the low pay that he did, but he knew it needed to be done. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a hard decision for us come to January, but we need to make that in, to the end of the game here, if you will. Uh, lack of, uh, better choice of words, but to the end of the year, and the thirty-two as opposed to the whole eighty-four, which we can't vote on till next year anyway.
So then, would you still have to hire a backup and then?
Well, that, that's, that's.
That is, that person gets paid.
Uh, I'll explain it this way, Mr. Sims just did. We, we don't know at this point in time.
Well, that's what he had said.
Well, he said, that's what he wants, but we get a lot of wants from a lot of people in emails, okay, they don't always get what they want. But we do need an EMA director, yes, flat out. We need.
EMA director.
Okay, huh?
We have Lance, he's our.
Well, I mean, you know what I mean, uh, uh, the hazmat. Uh, to replace Mr. Eckard, and that, that gentleman's very much needed.
Can I ask you one more question?
Go ahead.
Um, the additional eighty thousand dollars for the food, there's also that ten thousand dollars that went from uniform and clothing. To food response, eighty thousand.
Well, as you heard tonight, uh, the fluctuation in, in, uh, I did not know that, uh, kosher meals.